Good evening. We will start our regularly scheduled meeting of the Johnson County Council. Today's Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Roll call, please, Amy.
Rob Henderson.
Here.
Melinda Greasimer.
Here.
Jim Eisen.
Here.
John Myers.
Here.
Ron Dear.
Here.
Jonathan Myers.
Here.
Pete Ketchum.
Thank you, Amy. We do have a quorum. Melinda, if you would please offer an indication?
Absolutely. My Father in Heaven, we come before thee at this meeting and ask for thy guiding hand to be over this meeting and our decisions and how we conduct our affairs that we might conduct them in a way that's pleasing unto thee, and we ask for blessing on our military and those in potential harms way that they'll have clarity of mind and safety and bless anybody else in our county and who's in need, suffering at this time, whether it be illness or a loss, death, or addiction, and we ask for thy getting hand in all things in Jesus Christ's name.
Thank you. If you're able, please rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there, are there any modification amendments that need to be addressed? Very good. I would consider a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve item C routine matters consent agenda as.
We're on A four.
What did I do?
You're fine.
Move to approve the nine thirteen twenty-one agenda.
Second. A motion from JT, a second from John. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? That carries. Thank you. This point, open it up to public comments. If you would like to speak publicly tonight, please approach the podium, state your name and address, or if you are joining us via Zoom, please do the same. I see no one approaching the podium. Chris, were any takers on Zoom? No. All right. Thank you. We will close then the public comment section of tonight's meeting. Moving on to item B, approval ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ninety-three. This is the first reading, reading, and ordinance of the Johnson County Council authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to acquire vehicles, acquire and install certain equipment, complete certain projects, and make certain improvements and renovations, and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. Being the first reading, I believe this is a commissioner-sponsored routine G O bond. Any comments from the commissioners or any questions of council?
Brian Baird, Johnson County Commissioners. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
This is just a normal obligation bond that I've been dealing with since I've been Commissioner, actually. And what this bond does is covers capital assets and improvements that we see needed in the county in areas that we, we can't really get a lot of monies from other sources. So the bond really helps in these issues, including the fairgrounds, the park, vehicles, equipment, repairs and maintenance, and additions to the buildings and, and things like that. So very much needed bonding that we do in Johnson County. It has been very, very beneficial to the county since I've been there.
Thank you, Brian. I believe a two-year obligation, proposed obligation, is that correct?
It, it is. I mean, it's basically done every other year.
Yeah.
On this particular bond.
Very good. And correct me here, I'm looking the legal, Zach and Sheena. I, I think not too many years ago, the, the limitation on this used to be $2 million, and they bumped it up to maybe four or five million. Does that ring a bell at all, or?
It, it is.
Yeah. What was that, Brian?
It, this, this continues to increase as far as the value of the bond to make sure we, we stay within our rate so that we don't have to raise taxes and do things like that. And as this raises, there, there will come a time where we, we may be able to go to just one bond every couple of years, that have won every other year and, and rotate. But I think at this point, we've still seen multiple uses for this. And we had the ability to raise this bond for this year even higher, but we chose to go midpoint in between what it was and what we could go to because we're getting to a point where I think we're, we're gonna be able to catch up. And once we catch up, then we'll have to look at some different options on maybe how we do this proceeding forward. Then I hope that happens in the next couple of years. We should be able to have some more ability to look forward on what we need from here.
Very good. Thank you.
And any other questions you have? I'm here to answer what I can.
Further, any further questions for Commissioner Baird? We are seeking a, an approval for the first reading with entertain a motion.
We'd approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one day show three.
Thank you. Have a motion from Ron, a second from John. Any further discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? That carries. Thank you. So we'll, thank you, Brian. So we'll say the next one for the second reading and adoption or whatever your legalese you guys come up with. Right on. Thank you. All right. Moving on, item C routine matters consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda that's presented.
Second. I have a motion from Jim, a second from John. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? That carries. Thank you. That includes section C. Moving on. Section D.
Hi, Kristy Bruther, Director of Juvenile Detention. I'm here for a transfer out of the one hundred series into equipment to upgrade our video equipment, computers within the system, the control room, and a hand washing sink.
The all those positions are separate positions?
Yes, sir.
So how do you come to have hundred and sixty-one, are they all open?
Some are still open right now. Yes. There, it's a fluctuating, revolving piece. We've had trouble retaining or getting new applicants because of COVID, like any other department and across the whole state, Indiana. Everybody's looking for help. We are continually doing that as well. And so we have some people come and then they leave. But we are recruiting, we're doing, we have applications out online forums, but at this time we are short several positions.
So.
Luckily, we have good veteran staff and some part-time staff that help fill the positions to keep our numbers at where they need to be.
So this is the remaining in those positions for the rest of the year?
Correct. Yeah, that's projected out. So if I were to fill all of them now, I could, I left enough money in every line item to hire them now and fill the positions if we were have applicants. I didn't take away any money where I would need to ask for that back in any way.
That's where I was leading to. You won't.
Would not be back. No, sir. We return money regularly to the council out of one hundred series. We have positions that are open off and on. You know, we, we like, we try to keep them filled, and we're doing more. And I think the increase in the technology in the control room will help with staff retention and staffing being able to do their jobs. You know, we've implemented a wellness program for our staff there through some JDAI funds to give them different areas while they're at work to take a break and to decompress and those things. And so like we, we believe that this will help keep the employees that we have currently and allow them to do their jobs better and without additional costs to the county in terms of additional appropriation. It's already funded for two thousand and twenty-one. In addition, I don't know if Brian is still on the, on the call. There was two components that we were unable to fund at this time, the IP intercom system and the IP PLC system. Because of the bond monies, they had some left over and some of the renovations, they saved some money. They said that they would have the money to be able to contribute to put that in if, if it was approved by this body to move forward with the project. So we appreciate the support from the commissioners and making the building and bringing it up to date.
I, I think you answered my question by involving Brian, but we have a fellow named Wes Harrison. Does he review these bids? Has he seen them? Brian?
That, as far as the bids for the, the requirement of the material she's asking for?
Well, she's got sinks in here and some other stuff, you know, that's right up his alley. And they have a lot of exclusions on here, and I was just hopeful that Wes had seen it because he's pretty good at that.
Yeah, no, he has not. This is not a project. The out, the exterior of the building that's being redone, the roof replacement, the boilers, things like that, Wes has been involved in because that was a project that we did through the bond. This new, these new items that just came up are really outside of that project. So he would not be involved in, in those unless we ask him to become involved in those.
Okay. So Kristy, did you like provide any additional, like five percent on top of these or anything for contingency?
I didn't. Well, I asked for a hundred and sixty-one thousand to be transferred and the total is one fifty-three. So I built in seven or eight thousand dollars there for incidentals and equipment, you know, if something, the change orders and such. We also could potentially have some professional service operating, you know, in detention's budget to do that. I will say on the sink, it's only one, and the company that's doing it is also the company that got part of the bid when they redid the sinks. And so we were sectioned on that. And so that piece, I did have the county's IT look and give us the analysis for the computers and for that. They've also reviewed the quote from Stanley and will work with me on when, when this goes through, if approved. This was just kind of like the initial, hey, I need something to come to you guys. And then I've been working with the county attorney on if we have to put out bids or RFPs, and I can go back to Stanley and ask if they might be able to do a better job on some of these prices, or if we can do some things in-house. Chris and I have talked, there might be some things we can do ourselves. I just needed a ballpark baseline number to go to you guys with.
Okay, understood. Thanks, Kristy. Move to approve salary ordinance amendments, additional appropriations. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm off of it tonight. Item D, one juvenile detention center number one oh oh one dash one forty.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion from JT, a second from John. Any further discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? That carries. Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you very much.
Next up, user fee, jury fee, Superior Court number three. All right.
Free in Perkinsville, court administrator. I don't have the request. I didn't see the request, but I can presume to know why the request exists. And it's exactly as stated by Judge Hamner in the letter, the increase in jury trials, based on the number of backlog jury trials that we had, they're coming and they're coming in rapid fire. So the expense that we had projected to occur and that fund needs to be increased. That's the fund where we use to pay the jurors for their time.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion?
I'll move to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from John, a second by Melinda. Any discussion or conversation? May none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? That carries. Thank you for that. Next up, corner.
Evening, members of the council. Mike Pro, Johnson County Corner, coming for you tonight to ask for additional appropriation for pathology of thirty thousand dollars. So that is about what we're estimating is going to get us through to the end of the year. So we're in the hole a little bit right now, but we should be good if you guys see fit to allow this.
So can you elaborate just a little bit like what's happening right now?
Sure. And we, we encountered some bills from last year because we had a homicide during Christmas. So some of that didn't get billed until the new year budget. So that kind of set us back a little bit right out of the gate. But on average, each one of our autopsies costs us about anywhere from fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred. And it's really, it's hard to predict how many autopsies we're going to do per month. We can't, like right now, we're looking at about sixty-five hundred dollars a month on average. If you look at the whole year, what it's costing us for autopsies, autopsies, there's certain autopsies that are given that we automatically do, and then others are kind of based on what evidence we have before us. So it's hard to pinpoint some months, we may be at three, some months we may be at six. It's kind of all over the board. But so we know that, you know, based on what we've seen this year so far, that it's going to take about thirty thousand to get us through to make sure we have money to pay for our autopsy through the end of the year.
Just out of curiosity, this is nothing to do with it. I was just curious. So you do an autopsy pretty much on everybody unless they're in hospice?
We do, we do not. We do not. Not everybody gets an autopsy. Not everybody gets toxicology tests. A lot of times on like an overdose, we'll do a toxicology test. If we feel like that there might be something that would, would call for an autopsy, then we'll do that. If we autopsied everyone, I would be back in here every month asking for more money. So we have to be very selective. Doesn't mean that we pass over anybody we believe that needs it because of money, because that's not going to happen. We make sure that all investigations are done thoroughly when we, when we do need an autopsy. So it varies month to month.
Sure. Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve it.
Second. I have a motion from Melinda, a second from JT. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? That carries.
Thank you very much.
Michael. Next up, the Johnson County Redevelopment Commission. If you don't mind popping up here. Has my name on here, giving them the President of the Redevelopment Commission. We are seeking additional funds of up to fifteen thousand dollars to satisfy anticipated increases in professional service fees to which our secretary, Sheena, can elaborate on.
Sheena Johnson, RBC Secretary. We recently signed in a new letter of engagement with Ice Miller for the RBC Council Services. You may have heard that the process is a little bit prolonged, more so than we thought. And that's the reason that we need more money. But the good news is that this fund is funded through economic development fees. So to the extent that it's self-funded, I guess it is. And I don't know what the cash balance is, but I know it's more than that. Probably by a lot.
Looks like about ninety, just a tick under ninety-three thousand available. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Sorry, second. I have a motion from John, a second from Jim Eisen. Any further discussion? Hear none? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? That carries. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, D five. Cumulative, cumulative capital development maintenance contract.
Not quite who you expected to see. Michelle Ann Graves, Johnson County Treasurer, and I have with me Chief Deputy Treasurer Kelly Friends. I'm here before you this evening to ask for an additional appropriation in the amount of three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, six hundred, three hundred and ninety-seven, six hundred and ten dollars for the purchase of new tax administration software to replace our outdated current tax software. I sent everyone an email last week with some bullet points and highlights, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
This real property and personal property?
Yes, real property and personal property.
This is personal. Very good. Yeah, your email was very detailed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's amazing how quickly technology advances, you know, and but when you start to think about when your system went into place that you're replacing, hard to believe we haven't ran into some issues prior. So thank you for looking into this.
You're welcome. For the record, our current software was purchased in two thousand and eight. Before that, we had been operating on what was called a mainframe that a IT director by the name of Rob Norris created and maintained for everyone. And we've been limping along with that for a while, and it's time for some updates.
Very good. Any questions of our treasurer regarding the maintenance contract for the software? So the maintenance contract, you're actually purchasing.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Does it say maintenance?
Yeah, but it's a purchase of.
Yeah. So this is a purchase of software, training, and and licensing. We were able to find the funds in the KIM cap. The commissioners were able, so were able to work with us and find the additional money that we needed so that we could make this come to fruition this year.
Make a motion to approve item five as presented.
We need to change.
Do we? Let me see what the actual agenda.
I think the way the contract would pay them like in lease. That's why that helps when we do the gap reporting.
Okay. So you're saying we're good. Sorry. Thank you. Motion from Jim, a second from John. And further discussion, yes, Mr. Assessor.
Mark Alexander, County Assessor. I was involved in this discussion and it, and we also looked at another provider. And now I appreciate the auditor and the treasurer inviting them in. This is a very specialized field, and there's only a few vendors that provide the service. The one that we've got currently is integrated with the software that the assessor uses. So it was developed, and it was the first one that was developed in the state that interfaced, or it was integrated with PROVAL, which is what I call the CAMA system that we use. So that solves a lot of problems in that they talk to each other, and if the auditor enters, for example, a transfer of ownership, the name change, the everything that the auditor does comes over into the soft software that the, it's called CAMA, computer aided mass appraisal software that the assessor uses. So we've had that since two thousand and eight, and we've kind of, prior to that with Rob's system in-house, we would have to exchange information with paper. It was computer change forms. And that's, you know, coming from that to having it done one time. And then the only thing that we had to do was select who's going to change each field. And we made those decisions. The assessor changes the property class code, whether it's agricultural, residential, commercial, et cetera. We changed the situs address, the property addresses. Everything else is updated in MVP by the auditor. That's what we're going to be having to address manually again. So it's not really a, it's, it's going to be labor intensity again. And I don't know that you could, you know, label that as, as something that we're going to a better system that, you know, there's, there's only one other system in Indiana that has an integrated system with the CAMA and the administrative tax administration. That's called Xoft. And they're just, they're just developing their MVP version now. I was looking through my notes. I, I did, I got notice that this was going through the commissioners this morning, the council tonight on the eighth. So it was less than a week ago. I've been involved in the process, but that email said they've selected LAL, and they're putting it before for approval. So I had a little bit of time. I reviewed my notes. This, this is a, in reviewing my notes, this came up two thousand and thirteen. Same thing. They're going to change. It was a year, it was last year, Jan Richart, the following year was fourteen, Lexner. And then, so it's, it's something that paralleled a decision that was made on the part of the auditor. And I don't know about the treasurer back then, but what they're doing or not, they're not doing anything, but what, what, what the result is, they're going to be integrated, but I'm going to be disintegrated. So there's going to be labor costs in the assessor's office that we haven't had since two thousand and eight, you know, because we're going back, we're not going back to paper, but we're going back to, a report will come out aloud, we'll have to address it every day. And then, so I did, I did some research, and I, I've estimated the county I found that would talk to me in the short notice, Randolph County Winchester. And they're a small county, twenty-six thousand residents. They process three hundred and sixty transfers a year. Okay, that's transfer of ownership. They do that manually in the, in the assessor's office now, since they've had LAL, and they got PROVAL, I have PROVAL, and we're changing to LAL. He spends about a half hour day. So it comes across, he changes the address, or he changes the transfer processes to change manually in his system. So that's, I, I had that data. We do, they do three hundred and sixty in the year. We do an average of four hundred and six a month. So it's, it's about thirteen times the volume. So, you know, I can, I can work this out on how many man, not man days, person days better, but just doing that math, it would, if they're spending a half hour to do every day for that volume, it would translate to about six point seven five or close to seven, you know, close to a full day. And that would be an employee in that our lowest employee is thirty-seven thousand, plus you got your overhead or your benefits. So it's, you know, add fifteen to that. So it's about fifty grand. We have about seventy thousand parcels. So it's less than a dollar a parcel using that math. But that's a decision that goes along with this three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand. And it'll stay there because LAL is not integrated with any CAMA system. It's, all of them are going to be like this. So there is an alternative. It's Xoft. If we, if we were to change PROVAL and go to Xoft, seventy-two counties have. They've got the, they've cornered the market. That would be an integrated system. So it's an option that Johnson. That would be an integrated system, so it's an option that Johnson County could look at. If you go with Lau, you've made a decision, we're going to go to a disintegrate, or it's not going to be integrated with the CAMA ever. They're not, they're not aligned, but they don't have a CAMA system. So there's always going to be labor on, on the part of the prey, or the assessor that we don't have now. That's why I wanted to just, and I, I, I got this information this morning, actually, so, but I reviewed my file, and I had some of this back in thirteen. Timing of it with the change in order, I'm not running again. So it's, it's kind of one of those things to put on the table at a time when you've got new people coming in. And I don't know, I don't know if that's a good idea. I certainly wouldn't appreciate that when I took over, so. I just want to share that with you.
No, it's, that's great, uh, insight, obviously, there's multiple part. That ain't better, the worse is, uh, it is on. To speak up. Wow. So, thank you, that's a great insight, and the, obviously, there's multiple agencies, uh, departments interacting here. Question, in, in my day job, we, we have a core system, and then we have all these other ancillary systems, and sometimes they don't talk, so we we engage somebody to write a bridge, you know, to talk to one another, is that? Is that an option that they can talk subsequent to, uh, somebody building a bridge in lieu of a permanent FTE on an ongoing basis?
Well, what I know, just my research of Lau, Xsoft approached them to you know, buy them. Or, 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 you know, but they, they're an independent company, they're small, up, look up, located up in South Bend, been around. We have their financial package, I mean, they have a presence in Indiana. It's just they're not in the CAMA business, so they're not, they're basically, in, in tracing what happens after, you know, we work together anyway, but it's going to require combined, a lot more interaction on our part manually that we don't have now.
Yeah.
Uh, and I completely understand, and I appreciate, you know, the auditor and the treasurer wanting to integrate their systems. So I'm not, if somebody were doing, you know, coming in saying, Mark, I don't like your selection, and you're, you know, trying to stop me from changing, I would resist that myself, so I'm, I'm trying to make, keep this not be personal. And, and we, and we work together, we've worked together very well for a long time, so. But this is an additional expense, I just want to go on the record that when the time comes, I tell you, or comes to council and ask for an employee, that's, this is the, you know, start of that.
Right, so you're basically saying that currently, and I'm trying to understand this without knowing what all the vendors you guys are talking about. You were able to all communicate through whatever exists now, and there were problems with, you didn't communicate with?
The problems are, they, I didn't sit in where they were telling specifically the problems, I did talk to MVP Friday. And I, I know that there was a lot of problems this last, uh, role of our data to the auditor.
Okay, well, that, that's not what I'm asking, I'm saying that in the processing of the actions that all of you take, currently, a system that is being changed, in, integrated everyone, and you were able to do those spider webs wherever you needed to do them without any challenge other than normal big day.
Without any people, it does, the system does it.
Okay, so this change of system improves and betters what the auditor and, and treasurer needed, but causes you to have additional costs that you estimate will be fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year with benefits for an additional employee to do this, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, the, the, our base is thirty-seven thousand for our lowest position, and then I just add fifteen to get.
Well, okay, fifty thousand, whatever.
Yeah, but it's ongoing, it won't go away, as long as we have a disintegrated, we're not going to be integrated anymore with the auditor. And the, and the way it works now is, they populate something, it comes across, you know, automatically.
Okay, so Rob's point was, in modern technology, we may have to, someone may have to get a consultant that says we can get A and B to talk to C, but you're not, and this proposal that's not included as part of the cost.
Oh, no, and, and we do that, we work around those, you know, these are contracts, we're not allowed to do a lot of things with them unless we figure them out, but they're both proprietary software, so to get, you know, to get both of them to agree to have somebody link them together, it can be done, but, um, it's, it's one of those things where it's, it can be done, I've, I've determined in talking to others that it's painful, but it, it's all change is painful, and.
Yeah, they're in business to put each other out of business.
Yeah.
So there, the vendor. There is a vendor that has a system that will work with what the treasurer and auditor wants to go with?
No, there's no integrated CAMA with Lau. There's no assessor's program that is integrated with the treasurer and auditor when they're on Lau. And that's the decision, right now, it's the assessor and the auditor on the same vendor. And that's changing to the auditor and the treasurer will be on the same vendor, and the assessor will be on.
I thought I heard the same thing, I thought I, I heard you say that there was a vendor available, but you weren't consulted, so.
No. There's an, there's, Xsoft has seventy counties, they just developed their tax administration, they have four clients where it's running, but they have ten that have bought it. They came in this room and demonstrated their integrated system to the camp, CAMA for us, to the assessor and tax administration for the auditor, they have not developed a, a financial yet.
Okay.
But they're the biggest dog in the fight, I mean, they're, they're, uh, both of those are private entities, privately held. So they're able to work with a lot more on sales.
But going with them over, uh, this company would not solve our problem.
Um, that's on out there in the future, when they work the bugs out on, you know, their integrated system. There is no option with Lau at this point, and I don't think they're ever going to develop a CAMA system, so it's always going to be what we're, what we're, what you're considering now. And as far as MVP, I don't, I work with the auditor, I work with, you know, their product, the, the finished results. One other thing I, I found out about is we draw GIS data from MVP. That'll have to be reconfigured too, now, I, I never even thought of that until I got with somebody today. And that's, that affects several entities. And Lau can, I'm sure, guide us, but I didn't see that it was ever discussed in our discussions. And I'm, I'm kind of the third wheel on this, so I just wanted to, I had a little bit of time between the eighth and today, and I wanted to to share what I had found. And I'm, you know, if, if you, if you vote to approve this as submitted this morning's meeting, it was approved, the contract was approved with a provision for the attorney to review it. And, uh, I don't know what, what status that is when the starting date would be, I haven't planned for any of this with our staff. So it's not been coordinated to where, what's, what are we going to do, but I know it's a big job to convert, go through a conversion. I'm, I'm actually a survivor of a conversion back in two thousand. And we, we ended up, it was Plexus, yeah, and we ended up canceling the deal and kicking them out, but anyway.
What is, what is, yeah, what is the timeline for assuming contractual uh, review was satisfactory, when is the timeline to, to purchase and implement?
Um, I might be able to better address some of those questions and issues that you raised. The timeline that we're looking at, uh, for conversion would be January first, twenty twenty-two. Well, the conversion would actually start immediately, and we'd be going live on January first, twenty twenty-two. But if you'd like, I can step back and share a little bit more of the details with you. This project has been an inclusive project with the auditor, the treasurer, and the assessor for about sixty days now. And it's been an ongoing discussion and a concern that, um, our current taxware, our current tax software provider had been sold four, five, six times in, in their lifetime, and is currently owned by a Canadian company. If you need to, the auditor can address more, um, in detail, the issues that she had with a Canadian-based company owning the rights to our software and the support system that we didn't have access to during, um, some of the COVID issues. There are a very limited number of soft, of companies that provide software that support Indiana. And so at the Treasurers Conference this year, the annual conference, all the vendors are there, and we visited, Kelly and I visited with the various software providers. And it came down to a county of our size, there were really two software vendors that could meet our needs. One being Lau Tax, Lau, and the other software provider being Xsoft. We invited both of the companies in, and they gave very in-depth demonstrations of what their software could and couldn't do. The, our current software provider used to be the premier provider for Indiana counties and has lost market share, like from eighty counties, there's ninety-two counties, has gone from eighty to about thirty. So the writing's on the wall, and it's a problem that we are going to have to address at some time, and hopefully sometime soon, as in being tonight. Lau, Lau Tax is acquiring a lot of that work, a lot of the counties, and have been in business, they're an Indiana-based company. They currently have
Forty-one.
Forty-nine, forty, pardon me?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, forty-one counties that they're servicing with Lau Tax. And ProVal, well, there are just nine counties that have Lau Tax and ProVal. And they have been functioning in a, in a, in a system, while it may not be integrated, there are interfaces that we are purchasing in the amount that I am requesting the appropriation for today. Xsoft came in, and Xsoft is the premier CAMA tax provider in the state, they have about seventy-five of the ninety-two counties. And the assessors love them for their assessment value, their CAMA tax product, and it is a good product. Xsoft recently entered the market of tax software and has been live in Indiana for two years. They currently serve maybe ten counties, the largest of which is do you remember, Kelly? The largest Xsoft county just escaped my mind, but anyway, they're, um, close to Johnson, and in, um, some recent discussions, the the county elected officials there said that the Xsoft product was oversold, overpromised, and did not live up to its expectations. Was it Vigo? I want to say Vigo, um, but anyway, that gave us great concern, and then the proposal came in, and the proposal was from Xsoft with sixteen percent higher than the Lau proposal. So not only was it a higher price, it was a much less tested product. And they did not have the financial component available yet, and that was coming in twenty twenty-two. It is not prudent, in my posi- in my opinion, to pay a half million dollars to be a private company's guinea pig. I would not recommend it. I can say, uh, counties with similar demographics as Hendrix County and Monroe County, they, um, both have Lau Tax and Lau Financial, and can't speak highly enough of this company and what it does to make the processes more automated and more efficient for their staff. Again, to reiterate, the software that we're purchasing does come with the interfaces to interface the assessor's office with the auditor's office, but it will not be as much information as they are gaining now.
And isn't that my confusion that you're saying it does, he says it doesn't, uh, interface, so if two of you could somehow clarify
Sure.
what you're saying it doesn't.
Mistress, Mark, if I could insert here, one thing that I would like to say is, every year the state of Indiana requires us to submit our software products to each other, or to, to the state, every county is. And at that point, it is tested by the state to make sure that there's a certification that all three departments are talking to each other, and that they will integrate and work together. So I think maybe your question is, if, if we think it'll work, or they don't think it'll work, there is a governing body to that. The state certifies our software as to being able to work, are, are able to work together each year, so. And, and this is not about pitting the auditor and treasurer against the assessor, as Mark stated, this is about trying to work together. I've tried to get rid of MVP since two thousand and eight, at, at several commissioners' meetings and things in private with this company. I, I personally, I was, I was an auditor at that time, but, uh, I was not, on, on, speaking on my side, not the assessor's side, it's not been a good product, as far as I'm concerned. I have a three-ring binder somewhere full of negatives and things that we've worked with over the years. The, I've, I've, I've tried the same trick Michelle has tried twice before, and it didn't work for me. But I will say, the pushing point for the auditor was during COVID, when I was informed by, I don't even remember the name now.
Tim.
No, the name of the company now.
Oh, Almenton, it's Almenton.
Now, I was informed, uh, Madam Auditor of Indiana and the USA, this is a Canadian company now. So you're going to have to abide by the Canadian laws. We're closed because of COVID, and we won't be offering you any assistance, regardless if you're in the United States or not. That, to me, was a huge concern.
Yeah.
Just last week, there was, uh, and I can't, I have not completely finished the research on this, but there was a twenty-six thousand dollar, um, uh, error that was discovered by internal controls that surely was based on, uh, information being calculated wrong, and I still refer to it as MVP. So the problems on our side with MVP have been ongoing, and that I could speak personally of since two thousand and eight.
Yeah, my, my question in, in questioning what choices you guys have made, my question is how you can integrate, and we hear him saying you can't, you saying you can, and that's a little confusing.
So let me clarify, integrate is a system that communicates and works within itself. An interface helps the products work together. The interface may not be as functional as what the assessor is currently used to using now with an integrated system. So you have an interface and integrated, and, you know, I would not presume to know what Mark needs to run his office. He is amazing at what he does, and has helped me a lot, um, in my time here at the county. Any conversion is going to be painful, no one wants to go through it. I think the advantages that we're going to gain as a county, and our taxpayers are going to realize, is that for example, one of the, the, the selling features for the Lau version is that there is a forward-facing public portal that taxpayers can access their tax information twenty-four-seven, live data from any device, tablet, phone, computer, print their own tax bills, pay, make payments online, file mortgage deductions or exemptions, homestead exemptions. It pushes the county into the twenty-first century, there's lots of bells and whistles that come with the Lau software. The Lau, uh, the people at Lau have partnered with many The Lau, the people at Lau have partnered with many of the other vendors in the industry to help with automated, Rob, maybe you can help me with this. Remote deposit capture machines where these images will actually attach to the files in our tax software and we'll be able to see a physical copy of the check that was used for payment to help our taxpayers. And I hear Mark's words that perhaps it may increase the workload in his office. I, I dare say, let's jump it, we won't know till we know, no one has a crystal ball. But sometimes I think that the good of many outweighs the good of a few. And I think all that the county gains with making this move and making it now is a win-win situation. And I can answer any more questions if you like.
Can that vendor for a fee, obviously, work on interface?
Well, there currently is an interface, but it's not integrated. Could that vendor work on an integration? I mean, that, no one has a crystal ball. This is private market, so it would, it would all come down to money and what's profitable. I don't know. Mark has shared his opinion that he doesn't think that's going to happen in the future. I say we don't know.
Mark, I, you know, I listened in to both the treasurer and the auditor, it sounds like they've made their decision. I want to put my two bits in that I think that they've made the right decision. However, I think we need to pledge as counsel to you that whatever it takes to help you, I think we, we should do that within reason. Michelle may come down there and help you do all the input.
Well, that's the reason I'm here is you're making, I want to make sure you have as much data as available to you. It's not going to just be the three hundred and ninety-seven.
Well, that's understood.
Yeah.
And, and you've made that point. But I think that, you know, when you look at software upgrades, they could charge you a hundred thousand dollars for a soft grade, up, upgrade. And the thing could be bought out by somebody and could be in the same situation that we're in with the other now. You know, being two thousand and eight, that's a long time to run with one software. So I'm thinking, Mark, that it probably gonna have something happen to it anyway that may, you know, and I know there's this increased cost with you. But that may be a drop in the bucket compared to what the, down the road cost may be.
Right.
So I'm curious as to the other counties that are using this, obviously, we're all structured the same. What are their surveyor offs, surveyors doing to, to process it? Or sorry, sorry.
Yeah, it's from Lau, it exports the changes that were made in, in the auditor's function, which is that big number of transfers. And the assessors go to that every day. And then they, they go through the checklist and check them off and then they put them in manually. The name changes, everything that's related to the, and we do that now with the sales disclosure. So it's, we're familiar with the volume, but this is just adding that same volume to another function. And it's manageable, it's just when they talk about it's an advanced system, there's a key component that's not advanced. It's, it's going backwards, in my opinion. We're, we're, we're introducing labor. I'm all for labor. I mean, but it's also your most expensive component in your, in your spending. So, but that's, it'll be another trained person in our office to, you know, participate in this process. And I just wanted to bring that up at this point in time.
You don't think that that could be, do these have to be done daily or could they be done twice a week?
Oh, you do, yeah. It's just a production-based assignment.
Do you think it's something that could be handled with a part-time position?
Um, it's possible. I mean, the volume has increased every year. We're turning one, you know, one farm field into a hundred parcels pretty routinely. So I think we're always going to have this volume in Johnson County. And, but it's, it's not, it's going to be somebody we train. Sure, take it from here to here and.
And Michelle said that she took one of my favorite phrases, don't know, we don't know. And that you don't know that it won't help some degree until you go in. So that it may solve or integrate, whatever the word is. Interface in some areas, but not all areas where he would be able to complete the job totally. So after it's installed, you may not have to do as much as you think you are, if I'm hearing what you're saying, right, Michelle? Maybe. Maybe.
I couldn't, I wouldn't speak for Mark's office, he knows his workload. The only thing I do know, there are nine counties in Indiana that have in, are Lau Tax and Proval. And that is the software that the assessor uses. And they have found a way that it, to make it work. But I don't, I can't address the, the labor-intensive part of his side. I, I wouldn't know.
Well, then I, I, the thing I like about it is it's forward-facing, it benefits the taxpayer. They have access, correct?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Very good. So we, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Mark, we, we hear you. I don't. I suspect, I'm just thinking about Thursday, second reading, if that's something we addressed going into twenty.
Yeah, timing, that's the first time I've heard the timing element on this. So if they're planning on, I did talk to MVP, if you, they warned me, get them involved in the beginning. So if they're going to start the process soon, MVP will still be up and running and it'll be doing these changes in ownership because it's integrated. And they're going to have a dead database that they're working for the commute conversion. So if that were to happen at the end of September, we got October, November, December till they do the live. That's three months where our office will have to do this function all over again because that dead, that, that database was created for Lau to go live eventually. And they warned me about that and it's overlooked in some jurisdictions because it's kind of awkward. You're firing one company, but you still have to work with it. And so that's something I haven't planned for, we don't have the labor in place. So that's, I need to know, we need to coordinate all this.
If it helps any, I will reach out to the Lau, people at Lau. So the treasurer's office will be in the same position that we will be collecting tax money from the time they take the data file and, and get it ready to go live. So I am, I have assurances that we will be ready with everything we need on January first. But I will firm that up with them and definitely point out your particular concern tonight and see if we can't get that included and ready to go on one, one twenty-two as well.
Thank you. Yep, Mark, thank you. Kelly and Michelle, thank you. Wow. Lot of integration there.
Or not smile.
Black thereof in some respect, yeah.
It's, I, I, I really don't believe it. Been a long time.
Okay. Moving up, we have the Board of Commissioners.
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. We're putting a request in for the first of those Cambridge reduction of fifty-seven thousand, combining the two salaries to make one for an engineer and we're setting a cap on it as I submitted in the paperwork.
You kind of alluded to this, or it was discussed during the budget, first day, first reading for twenty-two, okay? Very good. Any questions regarding item D six on tonight's agenda? Okay.
Motion to approve item D six, you know, the bridge number one, one, three, five.
Motion from JT.
Second.
Second from John, any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you. Next up, Commissioners D seven.
Asking for the thirteen thousand, three eighty-five for grant administrator. It's approved, this occurs through the end of the year. If we can get one hired.
In, in this grant administrator, working out of the general fund, obviously funded out of the general fund, it will serve across multiple agencies or departments in the county? Okay. Very good. All right.
No one, anyone let us know.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough job description.
It, it's a very wise investment. Potentially millions of dollars that can be recruited.
So we want to keep the auditor busy.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve item A just presented. Seven and eight.
Well, we haven't discussed eight.
They're both on the same market.
No, item A, we can, we could, eight, eight is regarding the American Rescue Plan, which is not a grant administrator's for professional service.
Then I will make a motion to approve item seven as presented.
Motion from Jim, a second from Ron, any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you. And number eight?
American Rescue Plan. We've been seventy thousand dollars out for, we've hired a consultant and we want to put twenty thousand towards a construction manager. For if any projects we come up with, we want to move forward, Ron, we need to engage somebody.
It's Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly, yes, is the consulting firm we would hire, construction manager, which I would assume would be Mr. Harrison.
And also be projects funded through the American Rescue Plan? Okay.
And we don't really have any specified projects. We're just trying to get this set so we can have somebody start working on something if we do come up with a plan or plan of action.
Yeah. In, in talking with Baker Tilly, what is the timeline from, let's say, signing a contract to them letting us know of a framework of options or determinations or? Very good.
Just getting started.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna
Want to clarify.
Assume there's still a, a mindset to work with council, the commissioners and council work together on this is, and with Baker Tilly as, as this evolves. For the record, he's shaking his head affirmatively.
I didn't say.
Yeah.
Just, Rob, I asked a quick, I make sure I understand. Baker Tilly is, is guiding us through the process.
Right, that, that's
And keeping us in line.
Right, the twenty thousand isn't for Baker Tilly to hire a construction manager. It's for to hire a construction manager, has nothing to do with Baker Tilly.
That is correct.
Okay.
Right.
Very good.
I moved to approve item A, American Rescue Plan Act, twenty twenty-one, eighty-nine, fifty.
Second.
Motion from Ron and a second from John, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and just a quick, no, I'll wait, I'll wait till others goes.
Next up, community question, adult project income. Is Jason?
Oh. There he is.
Jason, can you hear us okay?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. So the first item of the business is transferring some funds to be able to have a floater correction, a correctional officer to be able to fill shifts when people need time off. We usually use part-time individuals, but because of, as Christie alluded to earlier, hiring part-time people have become extremely cumbersome and that we are paying a lot of overtime pay to current. We actually believe that by having this full-time position, it will save us money and make us able to have a, a more sustainable system in place for when people call in sick. So that's why we're requesting this.
Jason, I don't have, I guess nine is okay, but on ten, are the commissioners aware of this? Assistant Director.
So the Assistant Director, I have not consulted with them about it, but it was, it is for a, I mean, fourteen hundred dollars because she has a master's degree from University of Cincinnati in criminal justice, which is a top-five program in criminal justice. We, we have in the past given a people with advanced degrees additional compensation because of their advanced degrees in her experience in community.
I, I may have misunderstood, so the person is already employed and has an annual salary.
And that is correct.
Fourteen hundred eighty-six increase?
Right, because of the master's degree.
That makes it.
Easy, this is easy, that was easy. How much? Yeah, this is no-brainer. I'll make a motion to prove.
To clarify, the motion for items D nine and D ten, Amanda?
Yeah.
Correct, retro to September ninth, twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And you agree with that?
Yes.
All right, so first from Linda, second from JT, any further discussion?
Yes, I got, just have a question, where it's being taken from? Community coordinator, is that an unfilled position or what's not?
That is currently an unfilled position, but it is a, a position that we hope to be able to fill in the future. But that money is from our project income, none of it comes from the general fund or the assistant director for that matter.
Any further questions? All right, thank you. Call for a vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, both carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. That concludes section D of tonight's agenda, moving on to E, other business. All right, no other business being heard. Item F, old and new business.
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the mental health collaboration that's ongoing. We're starting to scratch the surface on that, but a lot of good things are happening with, between the departments and elected officials. And there'll be more to come on that. But it's, I think the American Rescue Plan Act probably is going to be playing into that a little bit. And our commissioner Walls could probably help out a little bit in that regard. But a lot of good things to come our way, thank you.
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. I've been working with some people, we've got a good collaboration of people put together on this mental health aspect. I know that adult and child. I know that adult and child provide services now. We've started down our own path a little bit on some services, and I'm gonna keep it kind of high level right now, I'm not gonna get too much in the weeds with you, because we don't. We've delved in a little bit, but I haven't got anything conclusive to share with you tonight. But I think there'll be some ask for funding at some time. Uh, I, I will give you this, we're trying to, we're gonna look at a pilot program. And it's gonna have to be funded, and we're gonna gather data off that pilot program to have substantial data, I guess that would be a good word for John at this point.
Yeah, I think so.
We just gotta track and find and, and gather our own data, so we know, i- it'll help, I think, everybody out in the long run, try to figure that out. So, but I'm gonna stay, say real high level right now. So there'll be a time when we come into near future, and I'll probably ask for some money to be transferred for this pilot program. Okay, so.
Fantastic.
Just wanted to make everybody aware that we're working on some stuff.
Very good, thank you. JT, was there anything further on that topic?
Uh, no.
So who's all collaborating with who?
Local leaders, we've got certain departments that deal with this all the time that are in there. I'll just spread it out, Sheriff's Department, probation, the courts, uh, the hospital.
Health Department.
Health Department. So we've got a good collaboration of people sitting in the room, and we're working on some really good positive things. But like I said, I'm not gonna get real deep in the weeds today, because nothing's conclusive yet that we've went down that road yet. It'll be coming soon, but I don't want to speak because I haven't solidified anything yet, so. Is that a fair answer?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Council members, there were also two handouts on your, um, at your place of seating tonight. One involves, um, some illustration of the criminal justice lit, and the other involves an illustration of some local, like roads, uh, the potential for potentially identified for approval or future renovation. Passed out as information only at this point, uh, and, uh, but just wanted to explain what you have and from where it came.
So the only I would say with that, I would, uh, ask for strong consideration, especially on the roads right now. As you've well heard in some of our meetings, we've been getting pounded pretty hard.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, if I recall, John mentioned during the budget cycle about, uh, we, we would entertain, I think there was a sentiment up here on infrastructure to entertain a, a plan, you know, if, if, if this is a, a two-year, three-year plan, you know, chunk it off a little bit e- every year. Um, I, I think there's a general thought here that we, we need to work with the commissioners and, and, and fund that, find a way to fund that in a responsible manner, so absolutely.
And what you're seeing is just a portion, you see those are rated number one, that's the lowest rating, very good. So, all right, so I'll give you the information we've got.
Yeah, just, just quick question, so as we're reading this, the key column is the one that says score?
Yes.
And all those ones are the ones that would be done totaling though, eight point eight approximately, that would be in the priority, top of the list.
Those are in the worst shape.
And in this sheet, is everything?
One of them is more neighborhood orientated, okay, the concrete replacement. That is more neighborhood orientated, the other is county roads, not in neighborhoods and what have you, just county roads.
Great, all right, thank you.
Sixty miles of them.
Would you be replacing the concrete with concrete or asphalt?
We're changing pretty much, I'll let Luke speak on that, it's, I think we're going to an asphalt overlay. Because we gotta do under drains, all kinds of stuff, and he can get you in the weeds if you want to wait another twenty-five, thirty minutes.
I mean, in today's pricing, it doesn't, it doesn't seem.
Well, before you get started, Luke, you said you had enough cash for a couple of years, right?
Um, to fund our federal aid projects, yes, to do what was on those lists, absolutely not. Would those be replaced with asphalt, yes. Asphalt for us, and honestly, for anyone, any street or highway department, is much easier to maintain, we're geared for maintenance for that, um, a lot better than concrete. There just are not a lot of maintenance options to keep concrete roads in decent shape.
So you see the light of the train coming through the tunnel at you, what date?
A couple of years ago. And, and a lot of that had to do with the, the quantity of concrete streets that we had. They were all built right around the same time, which means they all, for the most part, reached their end of life right around the same time as well.
Nineteen eighty?
Yeah. They've held up actually very well, I mean, we've been fortunate, but they all just seem to have hit, um, within the last several years at least. And no, I'm not talking for twenty-five minutes, I'm ready to go home, so you'll get short answers if you have questions.
Any questions for Luke or Commissioner Walls?
Appreciate the information.
Yeah, it's very detailed, thank you.
Quick.
Hope it's accurate. You get quick, or you can get accurate.
Got it, all right, anything else under old and new business?
So we're gonna discuss this or just give?
Sure, no, so the other handout had to do with criminal justice lit, top page, uh, and I'll be sure the auditor's office gets copy of this, uh, and, and legal. But the, the top page is the, uh, an illustration of receipts, uh, coming in through the jail lit. And then you'll see in the far right column, the, in the highlighted in blue, that's that reduction in the, in the, in the rate by one half percent based on what I, I believe and recall there to be a non-binding resolution. Uh, and it kind of just illustrates out over the next, the life of the lit, what the cash balance could be. And, and you'll see that in there is, are some figures plugged for operational, but not necessarily for, uh, capital, uh, projects. Page two, same thing, except that is, uh, illustrating the full current lit rate that would then stay intact throughout the sunset or until sunset. And the impact, of course, would be the, a higher cash balance, uh, notwithstanding any capital projects which are not funded or contemplated or anything to that effect. We have ideas, we talked about community corrections, we've talked about juvenile detention, talked about the legacy jail building, and some work that might need to be done there. But those are all just high-level discussions at this point, but that gives everyone, I hope, an idea of what that fund can look like or, or could look like with some assumptions.
And the reduction is it to by a half percent of what year?
So the, the, and I, uh, I'm challenged to, to go and find that document. I, I recall that there was certainly conversation, and I, I recall a non-binding resolution that upon retirement of the debt, uh, which, which would be January of twenty twenty-five, is when the final payment on the bond is, is due and payable. So i- i- in, in theory, Ron, it would be sometime later in twenty twenty-five when that could occur.
And in twenty twenty-five, the bond is paid off.
Correct.
For the jail structure.
The criminal justice expansion, yes, correct.
And in your opinion, Rob, do we have enough money to start with the, uh, uh, community corrections facility? And do this one percent reduction?
I, I believe so, I, the, I, I think it would be prudent to wait maybe another twelve months or so for the, that to build up. But the, the last number that I heard Saul talk publicly about, uh, with respect to community corrections was a number that started around four to five million, and quickly escalated to about fourteen to fifteen million. That was in that, in that company was, was fired for, for multiple reasons, you'd have to really get in with Ron West and the commissioners to talk about that. But that was the last number that I heard. So if you think about starting that a couple of years from now, you look at the cash balance a couple of years from now, you could in theory fund it with cash on hand, or certainly fund it with receipts a- a- at the lower rate or the higher rate, of course.
And that, that process, who triggered, who? Who drives the frame?
Were the appropriations of it, so it would be driven by, uh, the commissioners, but I would suspect and hope uh, that similar to the, the expansion of the criminal justice facility, that there would be a committee of stakeholders involved in that.
So the potential of what we're looking to fund in the future is some, uh, facility that is determined is in need for, uh, adult probation or juvenile or some switching of, and re- reconfiguring what you talked about the other night.
Yeah, so up until that letter came from in, Indiana DOC, community corrections was the priority, and then that shifted. Now that the jail project is, is done, um, in, in my opinion, there's still a need. I think the, the facility itself is still in, largely in some disrepair, and, and really kind of obsolete, ops, obsolete. Thank you, with its functionality, so I think that there's, this would be an opportunity, this is the time we get through the budget, we start looking at uh, twenty twenty-two and into twenty twenty-three, I think the conversations, in my opinion, should begin to happen.
Take a year or two to get it.
Absolutely, I would take.
For the future of that, but the, the line that you have here on both of them is addressing the discussion that we were working on during our budget hearings about the transfer of one point seven for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, this was an illustration, and, and my, my map, the other day, I heard we cut about two ninety-five-ish total out of the combined general and, and food and beverage. So my thought, when, when peeling back and looking at hospital and medical out of the jail, looking at utilities out of the jail, and looking at food out of the jail, there's some combination of, of that would be in here. My quick math on all three was about a million seven, a- and I'm probably off a little bit, but that was my quick math, so I just plugged that number in.
All right, so our action at the next hearing will be to do, to, to discuss and, uh, take action on doing that, or considering that.
Yeah, second reading is the time we will, we will identify which line item or line items under the jail budget that we will then move over to the criminal justice lit fund. Correct. Very good, anything else under new and old business? All right, uh, would entertain a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn. All right, we got a first from JT, second from John, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.